Good evening, everyone. We'd like to go ahead and welcome you to the Fruita City Council. The time is now 7:00 PM and we're going to go ahead and call our meeting to order. Debbie, do you please call roll?
Counsel Bremen.
Here.
Counsel Perser.
Here.
Counsel Williams.
Here.
And Counsel Kreis excused absent. Counsel Miller.
Present.
Counsel Hansi.
All right, we're going to move into our moment of silence and pledge of allegiance. If you'd please stand with us. We'd like to take your opportunity to allow all faith and beliefs the opportunity for a silent prayer. Thank you. If you'd please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we've got an agenda before us. Are there any changes to that agenda?
No changes, Mr. Mayor.
All right, do we have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Move we adopt the agenda as presented.
I can.
Counsel Bremen.
Yes.
Counsel Perser. Counsel Williams.
Yes.
Counsel Miller. Counsel Hansi.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
All right, with that, we're going to move into our proclamations and presentations. So our first one today is our Fruita Teacher/Student of the Month for April, and we've got the Fruita 8-9 School. I find it easier to come out front. I've asked Matthew to help me with this. All right, so it's our privilege to be in our community and just to help support D-51. And so each month, we honor a different school. And we ask that they submit, the principal submits who they'd like to have as a teacher or student of the month or different things. And so I'm going to go ahead and call your name and have you come up here. We've got a rec center pass for you, and then we've got an I Heart Fruita button. And then we would like, we've got two people tonight. We'd like you to stay up here because I know people like to take photos. So we don't want you to run off right away. So the first one for Teacher of the Month is Rachel Laverty. And she's the orchestra conductor at the Fruita 8-9 School. And in recognition of your dedication, passion, and hard work, thanks for all you do. Whichever side, I guess. The next one is for the Student of the Month, and it's Samantha Ross. And is being recognized by the Fruita City Council for outstanding musical achievement and excellence. Keep up the great work. Come on up. All right, if you guys want to get, anybody want to get photos? All right. Did you want the rest of this crew in it? All right.
And we're two of the stars.
We don't have it all together, just so you know. All right, let's give them another round of applause. Oh, all right. I just informed that the Assistant Principal may want to say a few words. So did you want to step up to the microphone?
Each speech.
Right up here to this mic, yeah. We're still, we ask that you don't go more than 45 minutes.
Do my best.
All right.
Hi, my name is Alicia Booster, and I am an Assistant Principal at Fruita 8-9. And I wanted to just take a minute to tell you a few things about, first of all, Samantha Ross. Like many of our students, Samantha has great grades, attendance, generally makes good choices. Yes, she stands out amongst her peers for a variety of reasons. And I thought, who better to tell you about her than what her teachers have to say? Ms. Laverty herself said Sammy is an amazing person. She's a leader in every sense of the word and encourages the people around her to do and be better. Her sense of humor is always spot on, and her positivity is contagious. Sammy has so many talents, but her work ethic is what is so impressive. She balances commitments to school, friends, music, and softball activities. I'm so impressed with her, and I can't wait to see all that she does in the future. Her Spanish teacher said she has a knack for language learning. She excels in Spanish one class with taking risks with the language through speaking and writing in the target language. We appreciate how she will be one of the first students to always volunteer in class. She is a pleasure to have with us, and we enjoy her personality and her fun smile. Her AP teacher said that she's a joy to have in class. She's always has an upbeat attitude and makes others smile. And that she loves that she has persevered through the course this year. And even though it hasn't always been easy for her, and she's been pushed out of her comfort zone and excelled while doing it. Another teacher said that she's always positive and enthusiastic about what we're doing, even if she doesn't love it. And that she's a joy to have in our building. She's committed to doing all of her best in all of her activities. And with all of her challenges, her positive attitude is contagious to anyone that is around her. And that's just a few reasons why she was nominated as the Student of the Month from Fruita 8-9. Right. Mrs. Rachel Laverty has been our orchestra director at all of the Fruita schools for the past 12 years. Under Mrs. Laverty's direction, the orchestra programs have grown in popularity and are very competitive. Ms. Laverty has very high expectations for her students, and they rise to those expectations. Her orchestras have only ever received superior ratings. That's a good thing. She's never received two at festival. It's just part of the scoring system, and we expect that streak to keep going. Pressure. No pressure. It really is an impressive accomplishment that most people aren't usually aware of. They do several ensembles. They have several who have received outstanding ratings at multiple grade levels. This is even more remarkable because Rachel travels between all three of the schools. So Fruita Middle School, Fruita 8-9, and Fruita High School. In addition to that, she's also our National Junior Honor Society Advisor, one of two. She helps plan and execute fundraisers, plans the student events with them, participates in the meetings. And she's part of the induction process every year. Given that she does not stay in one place for any length of time in a day, it could be easy to overlook the contribution that she gives, not just to Fruita 8-9, but to all of the Fruita schools. And here's just a few thoughts about some things that the staff have to say about her. We absolutely love having her as part of our staff. She does amazing things with kids and brings out the best in them. Orchestra students are some of the best students I have in my classes. They have a great work ethic and attention to detail. Mrs. Laverty knows how to inspire them to do their best in all areas. Somebody else said, I love it when I get the chance to substitute in the orchestra classes because Mrs. Laverty's students are very well behaved and trained to be leaders, and they hold each other accountable. What an awesome teacher. I heard a parent say to her, what's pretty much on this next comment. It says, it's amazing to go to their concerts because you can see the growth from one grade to the next because she does teach six worth, years worth of students. Our students are lucky to have the same orchestra teacher through all of their school years in Fruita. On a personal note, Rachel Laverty is a generous, warm-hearted, caring person. She has played the violin since she was seven. She can play all of the stringed instruments, and she dabbles in the mandolin. Her family was in a bluegrass band growing up, and they even opened for the amazing Ricky Skaggs. If you don't know who that is, I, we're not even friends. She also, I didn't know this, she wrote a waltz that was recorded. And she has a giant heart for dogs. And the plan when her and her husband retire is to open a dog kennel, specialing in senior dogs that need foster homes to live out their golden years. They have fostered 27 dogs since the spring of 2020, and they've only foster failed twice. So that means they keep them. Rachel, thank you so much for being an outstanding member of our Fruita 8-9 staff. Congratulations on this much deserved recognition. Fruita schools are indebted to your passion and drive to enhancing students' musical education.
All right, I'm glad we didn't miss that part. So that was great to hear. With that, we're going to move into our proclamations. We normally tell this school if they want to go, now's the chance to sneak out. But you can sit through our three-hour meeting if you want. But so with that, we're going to move into our proclamation. Our first proclamation is celebrating recognition of the 50th anniversary Mesa County Retired and Senior Volunteers, RSVP. And so I've asked Aaron to read that proclamation for us tonight. And then we have, I think Dave Carlo is here to accept that, and then we'll ask you if you want to say a few words.
Celebrating and in recognition of the 50th anniversary of Mesa County RSVP, Inc., and the volunteers of the Grand Valley. Whereas RSVP was started in 1973. And whereas RSVP 600-plus volunteers contribute thousands of hours and expertise and not, to nonprofits around the Grand Valley. And whereas this contribution of labor equates to well over $200, or $2 million in labor every year. And whereas April is nationally recognized as Volunteer Month. And whereas volunteerism is one of the factors that makes Fruita and the rest of the Grand Valley such a wonderful place to live and work. Now therefore, it be resolved that the Fruita City Council, on behalf of all Fruita residents, would like to recognize and sincerely thank Mesa County RSVP, Inc., and the hundreds of volunteers that devote their time to the service of others for helping to build the sense of community and family that make, that helps make the city of Fruita great and wishes this organization another 50 years of success. Thank you.
Thank you for having me.
I think in the show business, they say never follow children or animals. Thank you all very much. Thank you for the recognition by the City Council of Fruita. Our volunteers do a ton of stuff, all up and down the Grand Valley. And we could not survive as nonprofits in the Grand Valley if our folks didn't help us out. If some of these folks that are 55 and older didn't find a place to contribute in our society. And the honor of the days where 55 was the time where they gave the gold watch and rolled you out the back door. These are vivacious folks. Most of our volunteers are 70 years and older, and they do a great job. And matter of fact, I'm pleased to be joined by one of our board members, Dory Hanley, today. So thank you very much, Dory, and thank you very much for Fruita.
Thank you, Dave. All right, our next proclamation is proclaiming April 29, 2023, as High School Military Commitment Recognition Day. And we've got Kristy Hale and some fellow board members here that are going to come up after Amy reads this proclamation.
Proclaiming April 29, 2023, as High School Military Commitment Recognition Day. Whereas the freedom and security that the citizens of the United States enjoy are the direct result of the continued vigilance given by the United States Armed Forces. Whereas the sacrifices that such members of the United States Armed Forces and the family members that support them preserve the liberties that have enriched this nation. Whereas the City of Fruita recognizes and honors high school seniors who have chosen to serve in the United States Armed Forces following high school graduation and provides community support to families as their son or daughter transitions into military service. And whereas the Fruita City Council recognizes the value and importance of the selfless act of service committed to by these brave young men and women. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Fruita City Council does hereby proclaim Saturday, April 29, 2023, as High School Military Commitment Recognition Day. And the City of Fruita encourages all citizens to observe this day with appropriate activities and programs that encourage gratitude and support for these young men and women.
You can stand up to take your photo. You don't have to sit down. You want to get the best shot, right?
Just a little background for you. I'm Allison Rehore. I'm the First Vice President of Western Slope Blue Star Moms. And so Blue Star Moms is a national organization made up of moms who have children in active duty service who are veterans. My son Patrick is a 2020 Fruita Monument grad who actually had Rachel Laverty as an orchestra teacher. I'll tell you that. So it's our goal for high school graduates choosing military service to get the same recognition that we give in our communities to our athletes and our scholars. And so this year, on April 29, is our first ever Military Recognition Day, and we're holding it in Fruita. We're down at the Vietnam Veterans Memorial. We're going to have a recognition ceremony for Western Slope grads. We've got kids coming from Rifle, from Glenwood Springs, from Montrose, from Alatha, coming here to be recognized in front of their community. And then families will have the opportunity to gather for a picnic and start making those really valuable connections that you need as a military parent. So we're holding it here. You guys are awesome. You're all invited. Please come and join us to celebrate these kids because what they're doing is really amazing. And it's foundational for all of the other kids who are headed off to college, to the workforce, and to trade school. They would not have those opportunities if it wasn't for our young people who were stepping up to serve. So thank you all for recognizing them with the proclamation. We're going to read it out at the ceremony.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you guys have a time for that ceremony? Because I know that's not in the proclamation.
We do. It's at 11 o'clock AM.
Okay.
So the ceremony goes from 11 to 11:30 at the Vietnam Veterans Memorial. And then special guests, we would consider you all to be special guests if you showed up, can cross the parking lot to the Welcome Center for a picnic and visit with some of these families and grads.
All right. Did you guys get that down, just so we can put that in our? All right, well, thank you. All right, with that, we've got one more proclamation tonight, and that's proclaiming April 28, 2023, as Arbor Day. And I've asked James to read that one.
Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas the holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, lowering our heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood, paper and wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of the business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, I, Joel Kincaid, may refer to do hereby proclaim Friday, April 28, 2023, as Arbor Day.
All right, we've got Mark Mancuso from our Parks and Rec Department Director that's going to be here. And you didn't bring the poster up to show what the kids did? All right, there we go.
You know the drill. Thank you, sir.
I wasn't doing nothing, Mark.
Sorry, Mark, you ran out of time.
All right, that's good. Mr. Mayor, members of council, thanks for letting me to, letting me share a little bit about Arbor Day. So we're really excited. This year, we had all four schools. Monument Ridge, Rimrock, Loma, and Shellity participate in the poster contest. The winner, the overall winner was from Monument Ridge. His name was Addie Ono from Ms. Dar's class. So this Rob from City of Grand Junction, the forester there, he said this is state champion poster, quality poster. He really feels confident. So the local winner will get a tree planted at their school. So Monument Ridge will be planting a tree on April 28 at 9:30 AM. And the winner, this poster will be submitted to the state competition. And Addie will have a chance of winning a $500 scholarship for his art. So if you guys haven't seen the posters at the Fruita Community Center, they're in the rec rats on the windows. There are some great artists out there, and it's pretty amazing. So each year, we've seen the number of posters grow and grow and grow. And so this year, there was a lot of posters that were submitted. So we're really excited. This is a great poster. So yeah, we're excited to see the program grow. And we also just received the Tree City USA for the 30th year here in Fruita. So we appreciate you guys supporting trees and supporting our efforts to park, so.
Thank you, Mark. All right, we're going to move into, we've got one presentation tonight, and it's the Historic Preservation Board update. And we've got our city planner, Henry Hempel, that's going to present on that. Get everybody away, Henry. Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, yes, my name is Henry. I'm the staff liaison to the Historic Preservation Board. You guys hear me talk enough, so I want to introduce Chair Chris Andreessen. He'll give the update tonight while I hand out some coloring books that we've produced and some walking tour brochures while he gives you an update.
You might already have those, but you give them.
Hi, I'm Chris Andreessen. I'm the Chair of the Historic Preservation Board, and I'm also joined with a couple other of my board members. Dory and Peggy are here. I don't see anybody else right now, but we, we are a nine-member board, as you guys are probably well aware. And it's an honor to be here and speak to you guys about what we've been doing lately. And of course, our board liaison, Amy, it's great to have her. We appreciate that. So as I understand it, you guys are kind of just looking for an update of what we've been up to and what's going on and where we're going. And since I joined the board in 2019, we've really ramped, ramped things up a lot. Obviously, our, maybe it's not obvious, but our primary goal is education. And there's lots of ways of doing that. But I think one of our biggest accomplishments as of late is our ongoing history fair that first started off at Paper Day, but then transitioned now to during the Fall Festival. And that's been very well received. And through that, we've gained greater recognition. There's been a lot of really great comments that have come from the community, and we've been able to do some really other wonderful things, such as recently getting our coloring book republished through many partnerships in the community to help fundraise for that. And at this point, nearly half of the 5,000 that we had reprinted are distributed around the city. So we're running low, maybe. We know who to talk to. And then the reprinting of a walking tour brochure, which is, which is really great. And obviously, that brings in a component of economic tourism, heritage tourism, that we think is really important for the city. And so getting that out there, of course, it's online as well, but having it printed and available for people to walk around and use is great. So something else that we've been really working on lately is more local partnerships. So partnering with the Chamber has been really beneficial for getting information in and out and making things happen. Fruita Rotary Club has been very, very important, and other local businesses, of course. Arts and Culture Board, the Tourism Advisory Board, Downtown Advisory Board. We've been communicating greater and trying to partner with the Western Museums of Western Colorado, excuse me. And the, a strong tie has actually grown stronger recently with the Heritage Room, which is just right across the hall over here, of course. And then, let's see, other things. Recently, we have embarked on and are currently working on a redesign of our historic plaques. And so we're hoping to keep that moving forward and then get more of them out onto our historic structures, replacing the ones that are there that are worn out and dated and putting nice ones up as well as homes. Do that, so we're working on that. We kind of had to work a little bit on the rebranding, of course, that was easy to do because can just pull stuff from the resources that are doing that. The History Fair, one of our more, I guess, another thing that we've done and actually is happening on the 29th is the Mesa County History Fair, which we'll be participating in. And so we've been trying to partner with the other historic resources across the valley so that we don't operate as silos and we can partner and help share the history and the value in that. So we will be participating in that History Fair on the 29th, and that will be at the Old Loma School. If you guys are interested in going to that from 10 to 4. Let's see here. There's so many things. Some of them are big, some of them are small, but it's, of course, just continued research. One of the other big things that we will be trying to partner with, as we understand it, the Oral History Program is getting revamped with the museum and the library. And so we want to point people towards that so that we can capture those oral histories before it's too late and have those as a resource for everybody in the city. So I think that kind of summarizes the high points. I could talk for a lot longer about specific things, but do you guys have any questions or any thoughts? I know we are a board of the city and for the city, and so we want to make sure that we are accomplishing your goals as well. And I know part of what we do also ties into the land use code and some things related to downtown and historic preservation. And so that, that is something that's always on our radar, of course, as well.
I appreciate hearing that you're partnering with a lot of these other boards because I think it takes a lot of cooperation and yeah, historical one, I think you guys can bring some insight for some of those other boards and where we've been and.
Well, we have a lot of people in this valley and in the city that have a lot of historic knowledge. And the only way to get that dispersed out and become an educational component is to partner so that it can be useful.
So is your board looking, because I know you don't have a budget. Are there things like the plaques and other things that you guys are putting together to bring, come to us, you know, so we can produce those? Or I guess what are those type of goals that you're looking at long?
So yeah, correct. We do not have a budget, but I think our, our really largest, you know, capital campaign trying to raise money was for the coloring books. The reprinting of the, the walking tour brochures was in partnership with the Tourism Board, which was very, very kind and helpful. But I, I don't think we've talked about specifically whether we would come to one entity or another, but we would try to do something like we do with the coloring books and go out to a broad swath of the community and see who's interested in, in helping out. Likewise, we hope to find a sustainable means in which, we know that the coloring books are popular and they're going to be distributed at some point where, you know, then they'll be gone and we'll have to reprint those. And we'd like to find ways in which we can partner with the schools, for instance, to, if they would like some, they could maybe pitch in some, some dollar value, and we could find other sponsors. And as a matter of fact, And as a matter of fact, I'm partnering with the Rotary. I'm also on Rotary to distribute the coloring books next week at the Literacy Program for the first gate, first grade book distribution. So there is going to be a bunch of them going out to the fruit, just to the fruit of schools, of course. But yeah, so money is always, I guess, now it's becoming more of a broader topic during our meetings because we are trying to tackle some of these tangible, physical things that do cost money. But we're we'll work through it one project at a time.
And the community really did step up with the coloring books. I think that was was fantastic. Once we reached out to the Chamber and was Kayla was like, oh, I I know I can, I can, that was, yeah, that was a really, really cool.
Good job of getting them spread out, not only to individuals, but to the restaurants, right? All the restaurants seem to have them now.
Yeah, they're nearly, I think every major business has has them at this point. And we're still just distributing the walking tour brochures. They're a little smaller. We're just trying to make sure that they go in a place that they don't get hidden or thrown away or, you know, something like that. But people can opt to get them digitally, of course, as well. And we do hope at some point to digitize that into like a Google Maps format of some kind or something where people can walk around and get those resources. But that will tie in really well, we hope, with the replacking essentially when when that time is right. And that should also, another project is putting more interpretive signs downtown of historic information regarding businesses or how downtown functioned at a certain period of time, you know, kind of like the ones that are already up and down Main Street, so. But yeah, kind of the broad swath.
No, we appreciate you coming in. Anybody else have any other questions or comments? Thank you. No, thank you.
You so much.
Our pleasure. We appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
All right, we're going to move into our public participation. So this section is set aside for the city council to listen to comments by the public regarding items that do not otherwise appear on this agenda. Generally, the city council will not discuss the issue, will not take an official action. So does anybody in the audience that'd like to speak on an item not on the agenda now is your opportunity? Now, buddy, this is your opportunity. All right, with that, there's anybody online, Ciara?
No comments online, Mr. Mayor.
All right, with that, then we're going to close public participation and move into our consent agenda. So these are items where all conditions or requirements have been agreed to or met prior to the time they come before council for final action. These items will be approved by a single motion of the council, and so we're going to open that up to public comment. If there's anybody that'd like to speak on an item on our consent agenda, now is your opportunity. All right, I'm not seeing anybody. Are you, Ciara?
No comments online.
All right, we're going to close public comment, bring you back to council. Are there any questions, comments, or do we have a motion to approve?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Counselor Perser, Counselor Williams, Counselor Miller, Counselor Hancy, Counselor Bremen, motion passes 650.
All right, with that, we've got several public hearings tonight, and so we've got five on our agenda. So our first one is a special event liquor permit application, a request to approve an application from the Fruta Area Chamber of Commerce to provide a beer garden at the Lower Valley Fire Cornhole Tournament. And we've got our Deputy City Clerk Deb Woods presenting on this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. I am presenting the Fruta Area Chamber of Commerce's Special Event Liquor Permit Application to provide a beer garden at the Lower Valley Fire Cornhole Tournament Fundraiser, which is scheduled to be held on Saturday, April 22 from 2:00 to 6:00 p.m. here right out front at Civic Center Memorial Park. The this is the first annual cornhole tournament fundraiser, and the benefit is going towards firefighters' mental and physical wellness. The chamber and its volunteers will be on site selling tickets for beer after checking IDs. And the diagram of the proposed license premises included in your council packet illustrates the area at the park that will be enclosed with mesh fencing with wood stakes to keep the alcohol contained to the one area. There will only be one entrance and exit on the northwest side of the park near the parking lot. And proper signage will be placed there to indicate that no alcohol is permitted outside the fenced area. Chamber staff and volunteers will be monitoring the licensed area and the consumption of alcohol to ensure that no alcohol enters or leaves the area. If the chamber runs into any issues with patrons who are showing signs of becoming noticeably intoxicated, the Fruta Police Department will be contacted for assistance. Fruta Chief of Police Dave Kraus did review the chamber's application and provided his statement that there was nothing that would prohibit the issuance of the license being requested. Therefore, it's staff recommendation to the city council that the application for the special event liquor permit be approved subject to the following three conditions. One applicant will just continue serving alcohol at 5:30 p.m. on Saturday, April 22 to allow patrons 30 minutes to finish their beverages and leave the area. Two, all alcohol will be secured and removed by 6:00 p.m. And three, the licensee needs to be aware that they're solely responsible for control of the licensed premises in regard to alcohol possession, consumption, and adherence to state and municipal laws. So that concludes my presentation, and Kayla with the Fruta Area Chamber of Commerce is present virtually with us this evening as the applicant's representative. So I'll turn it over to Kayla for any additional comments she may have.
Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. Well, thank you, Deb. She did a great job, as usual, letting everyone know what we intend to do for the cornhole tournament this Saturday. It is the first time that we've partnered for this event, but it's not the first time that the chamber has conducted a beer garden. We will also work with the Lower Valley Fire Professionals and Staff Volunteers to just monitor the entrance and exit point. There is only going to be one entry and an exit point, so that way we make sure that no alcohol leads the premise. But that is all I have. Thank you so much.
All right, thanks, Kayla. All right, with that, we're going to open it up to public comment. If there's anybody in the audience that'd like to speak on this item, now is your opportunity to do that. I'm not seeing anybody here. Is there anybody online that would like to speak? All right, with that, we're going to close public comment and bring you back to council. Are there any questions, comments?
I have a question with, it looks like the food trucks are taking over handicap parking. Do we have a plan to have other handicap parking available during the time?
So I actually spoke with the Lower Valley Fire Department today just to verify how many food trucks they were going to have, and there should only be two food trucks. So we discussed moving them over so that way they can actually be closer to the fencing. And so they shouldn't be blocking any of those handicap parking spaces.
Awesome. Thank you.
All right, any other questions? Hearing none, do we have a motion?
I move to approve the application for a special events permit for the Fruta Area Chamber of Commerce to sell and serve beer during the Lower Valley Fire Cornhole Tournament Fundraiser on Saturday, April 22, 2023, from 2:00 to 6:00 p.m. at the Fruta Civic Center Memorial Park located at 325 East Aspen Avenue, subject to the conditions stated by staff. Second.
All right, we've got a first and a second. Any other comments? All right, hearing none, Deb, would you please poll council?
Counselor Williams, Counselor Miller, Counselor Hancy, Counselor Bremen, Counselor Perser, motion passes 50.
All right, our second public hearing is for a special event liquor permit application. It's an application for the Fruta Area Chamber of Commerce to sell and serve beer and wine at the Fruta Fourth Friday. And we've got our Deputy City Clerk Deb Woods here to present.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is another application from the Fruta Area Chamber of Commerce, and this is for the Fruta Fourth Fridays that will begin with the month of April this month and go through July. There are four dates listed on the application itself, and those dates are April 28, May 26, June 23, and July 28. And on all four nights, the special event permit is requested from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. on all four nights. The location for the for these events will be at the Farm Building at 160 South Park Square in the parking lot. So the chamber and its volunteers will be on site selling tickets for the beer after checking IDs. Actually, I believe they're selling beer and wine. The diagram of the proposed license premises included in your council packet illustrates the area in the parking lot at Farm that will be enclosed with wooden fencing provided by the city of Fruta. This will keep the alcohol contained to the one area, and there will be only one entrance and exit containing proper signage that will be placed there to indicate that no alcohol is permitted outside the fenced area. Chamber staff and volunteers will be monitoring the licensed area and the consumption of alcohol to ensure that no alcohol enters or leaves the area and that no patrons become noticeably intoxicated. If there are any issues, Fruta Police Department will be contacted. Fruta Chief of Police Dave Kraus reviewed the chamber's application and issued his statement that there was nothing that would prohibit the issuance of the license being requested. Therefore, it is staff's recommendation to the city council that the application for the special event liquor permit be approved subject to the following three conditions. Applicant will just continue serving alcohol at 8:30 p.m. to allow patrons 30 minutes to finish their beverages and leave the area. All alcohol will be secured and removed by 9:00 p.m. And the licensee needs to be aware that they're solely responsible for control of the licensed premises in regard to alcohol possession, consumption, and adherence to state and municipal laws. And that concludes my presentation. Again, Kayla with the chamber is here virtually as the applicant's representative.
Great, thank you again, Deb. I just wanted to add that the chamber is looking forward to partnering with Fruta Fourth Fridays. All of the proceeds that we raised at the Beer Garden are going to go directly towards our Fruta Area Chamber Foundation, which helps support a lot of our scholarship initiatives. So we're looking forward to this partnership and helping further our fundraising for the foundation.
All right, thanks, Kayla. With that, we're going to open up to public comment. If there's anybody in the audience that'd like to speak on this item, now is your opportunity. I don't see none. Is there anybody online that would like to speak?
No comments online.
All right, we're going to close public comments, bring you back to council. Does anybody have any questions or comments on this item? All right, do we have a motion?
Here, I move to approve the application for a special events liquor permit for the Fruta Area Chamber of Commerce to sell and serve beer and wine during Fruta Fourth Fridays on April 28, May 26, June 23, and July 28, all of 2023, from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. on all four nights at Farm located at 160 South Park Square, subject to the conditions stated by staff.
Second.
All right, we've got a first and a second. Any other questions or comments? All right, hearing none, Deb, would you please poll council?
Counselor Miller, Counselor Hancy, Counselor Bremen, Counselor Perser, Counselor Williams, motion passes 50.
All right, thanks, Kayla.
Thank you all.
All right, with that, we're going to move into our third public hearing. It's Resolution 2023-08, a resolution of the Fruta City Council finding approximately 3.4 acres of property located at 1806 J and 310th Road eligible to be annexed into the city of Fruta. It's the Berg Annexation, and we've got our city planner, Henry Hempel, here to present.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Let me share my screen here real quick. This is a Resolution 2023-08, a resolution to find the property eligible to be annexed into the city of Fruta. The first requirement in an annexation is to adopt a resolution to set a hearing date to determine the eligibility of annexation, which we accomplished a month or so ago, maybe two months ago, which we set tonight's public hearing date. Additionally, staff has sent out legal notice in accordance with local and state law initiating this public hearing tonight. And so by state statute, we are required, or you are required, and as a city, we're required to hold a public hearing to adopt a resolution to determine whether or not said property is eligible to be annexed into the city of Fruta. In your packets, you received an annexation impact report. Our code requires that we do that to ensure that the property that's petitioned to be annexed can be served essentially with city services. This has been accomplished. That's required to be done even before we start the annexation process and set public hearing dates. So we're here tonight to initiate this resolution to determine whether or not this piece of property is eligible to be annexed. And so we have legal notice required after the first resolution. That's a four consecutive week legal notice in a local newspaper. That was accomplished on February 22, March 1, March 8, and March 15. That and that told the public in a local newspaper that we're going to meet tonight to discuss eligibility. And then when we're talking about eligibility, what we really mean and what the state statute contemplates is is the property contiguous, at least one-sixth of the the perimeter, is it contiguous with existing city limits? There's a statute that says that contiguity is not affected by a platted street. It also talks about a couple of other kind of geographical elements, but a public street is not affected by contiguity. So it can basically hop. And in this case, J and 310th Road, which we are anticipating annexing that with kind of a roadway annexation petition, or we'll capture some more annexation other than just a little chunk of it at a time. So it does meet the one-sixth contiguity for the property that's contiguous to the, what is that, the southwest? And with that, really, it just wraps up my presentation to affirm to the council that the application is eligible to be annexed, does meet state statute for contiguity, and staff recommends that the council approve or adopt Resolution 2023-08. That concludes my presentation. The applicants here, and so if you want to.
Okay, yes.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, council, staff, thanks for your time tonight. My name's Kim Kirk. I own Kirkland Consulting and Development in Grand Junction. So I'm here tonight as the representative for the Berg family on this annexation and his own request that we've been processing. Henry just gave you all the information, so I'm not going to repeat it to you. But we do meet all the requirements, and I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
All right, we're going to open up the public comment first, and then we'll come back if there's any questions. So with that, we're going to open this up to public comment. If there's anybody in the audience that'd like to speak on this item, now is your opportunity. Anybody want, you don't, you guys don't want to speak? All right. With that, I'll close. Is there anybody online?
No comments online.
All right, with that, we're going to close public comment and bring you back to council. Does anybody have any questions or comments on this item?
Can you refresh my memory how this is currently zoned?
The property is zoned AFT, which is a county zoning designation. And so the first step tonight, and kind of the order that you have it on your agenda, is we need to find the property eligible to be annexed. And then, following this, we'll initiate public hearing on ordinance to actually do the annexation and then to zone it. So right now, it's in the county, but you're really just on this one determining whether or not it can be in the city limits yet.
Any other questions? All right, do we have a motion?
I move to approve Resolution 2023-8, a resolution for the city of Fruta of the Fruta City Council finding approximately 3.4 acres of property located at 1806 J and 310th Road eligible to be annexed in the city of Fruta.
Second. All right, we've got a first and a second. Any other questions or comments? Right, hearing none, Deb, would you please poll council?
Counselor Hancy, Counselor Bremen, Counselor Perser, Counselor Williams, Counselor Miller, motion passes 50.
All right, with that, we're going to move into our next public hearing, which is ordinance 2023-02. And this is the second reading for annex. And this is the second reading for annexing in approximately three point acres of property, and we've got our city planner, Henry Hempel, here to present on this one.
Yes, thanks again, Mr. Mayor. Uh, yes, this is the second reading of an ordinance to initiate annexation of, uh, the property located at eighteen oh six J and three tenths road. Uh, it's land development application twenty twenty-three dash oh three. Uh, just gave it the name Berg. That's the property owner's last name. Pretty straightforward. It's an annexation application. Um, and it's located at eighteen oh six J and three tenths. Legal notice, uh, we'd like to touch on this, uh, prior to talking about some of the land use code, uh, requirements that are, uh, applicable to this application. Uh, so postcards, signposting and newspaper, those are all required to be, uh, legally noticed for public hearing dates, uh, fifteen days prior to the planning commission meeting, which initiates kind of the public hearing process. Those were all accomplished on February twenty-second. And following that, then the planning commission had their meeting, um, and made a recommendation to the city council. Uh, we also have to, um, follow state law with regards to, um, setting public hearing dates for ordinances. We have ten days uh minimum to have a first reading of an ordinance and set a public hearing date for the second one. Uh, that was accomplished, uh, well in advance of, uh, the ten day minimum requirement, and that happened in a local newspaper that's initiated by the clerk's office. So to touch on the methods of legal notice, we have legal notice posting on the subject property. You can see in the map on the left. Uh, we have two legal notice, uh, postings on there. One is for the annexation and one is for the subsequent hearing item for the zoning. Um, and then the map on the right, uh, that shows the legal notice buffer for postcard mailers. That's three hundred and fifty foot radius around the subject property, so we just type that into GIS. It gives us this list and we filter it out and ma- make mailers and send them to either uh, the property owner that's listed on record, or we have kind of a boilerplate or current resident, because not all the time is it updated. The, the mailing labels and the, the names on the postcards aren't updated in real time all the time when we're generating these, so. Um, the nice thing about the postcards too is for annexations and zoning applications, neighborhood meetings required, so we just deliver these mailing labels to the applicant's representative, and they just use those mailing labels to invite the public who are then going to receive legal notice postcards. We're inviting the same people to multiple meetings at different times to educate and let them know what's going on, and then we have our, you know, our standard legal notice. So the, kind of give a, a, a gist of the area. We have J and three tents on the southwest, Heinz Street on the west, J and two tents on this, on the south, and then some unincorporated Mesa County property uh to the east. There's also city property as planning and development and community residential, uh, nearby surrounding this with the Dollar General store just to the southwest as well. Uh, just to give you an idea of the location. Plus, we have a, an aerial photograph. You can see a location of the dwelling unit on the south side of this property with approximately, you know, two and a half acres on the north. Here's a clip of our future land use map. This is containing our, um, comprehensive plan. It's really a guiding document to help, uh, our staff, the planning commission, the public and the city council to understand how we want to grow, where we want to grow, and how does that look? So this is really just a, a, a guiding document, but as we zoom in, we can see the subject property here and, um, the, um, existing city limits is that block line. Everything kind of within that line is, uh, located in the city limits. Anything where the subject property is, and you saw the unincorporated Mesa County uh properties that were zoned in that zoning map, those are all, uh, proposed to be within the city limits at some time, similar to this process and annexation and the zoning request, but right now we're, uh, we rely on the future land use map to make, uh, informed and educated decisions on whether or not properties can be annexed. This one's uh pretty straightforward. They're already tied into our, our sanitary sewer service. Um, there's city sidewalk, um, surrounding the subject property pretty much. And so, um, the comprehensive plan supports us to be in the city limits. Uh, jumping into the review criteria, there's nine to consider. Uh, mostly with regards to beating state statute, which we just initiated the resolution to determine the eligibility, so we found it eligible. Um, it must be within the urban growth boundary. We just visited that with your, uh, the future land use map, and it is within our urban growth boundary. Um, it can, uh, and already is served by police, which is a municipal service we offer, and other municipal services like Lower Valley Fire, uh, which is, uh, the fire department, um, sanitary sewer, youth water, uh, trash collection, and all of those, it's within that, so it meets that as well. And then, uh, the area meets or can meet the existing infrastructure standards set forth by the city. We're pretty much already there. Uh, some sidewalk improvements at some point when the property develops will be initiated on the north side, northeast side of J and two tenths road, uh, or J and three tenths road for that. Um, but it can be and, and already is being served, so uh, has been met there. So all the criteria that need to be considered either have been or can be met, uh, and staff does support that. Nor reviewer expressed any, uh, concerns with this annexation, and we have not received any, uh, written public comments. Uh, nor did we receive any oral, uh, comments at the planning commission meeting when we had it a last month or two months ago. So with that, staff recommends, uh, the council adopt ordinance twenty twenty-three dash oh two, uh, annexing the subject property into the city limits. That.
Thank you. And we've got Kim here. Does she want to say anything?
Hi, I'm Kirk again. Just to, to let you know, I'm here in case you do have any additional questions or need some information. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. All right, with that, we're going to open up to public comment. If there's anybody in the audience that'd like to speak on this item, uh, now is your opportunity. Seeing none here. Is there anybody online that would like to speak?
No comments online.
All right, with that, we're going to close public comment and bring you back to council. Is there anybody, does anybody have any questions or comments on this item?
None.
All right, then do we have a motion?
Move we adopt ordinance twenty twenty-three dash oh two, annexing approximately three point four acres of property located eighteen oh six J and three tenths road into the city of Fruta.
A second.
All right, we've got a first and a second. Any other questions or comments? All right, hearing none. Deb, would you please poll council?
Counsel Bremen?
Yes.
Counsel Perser? Counsel Williams?
Yes.
Counsel Miller?
Yes.
Counsel Hancy?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
All right, with that, we're going to move into our last public hearing tonight. It's ordinance twenty twenty-three dash oh three, and it's a second reading. Amending the official zoning map for the city of Fruta, uh, by zoning in the approximately three point four acres of property located as the Berg rezone, and we've got our city planner, Henry Hempel.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, one last time, uh, tonight for this. Uh, I'm sure there's a way to consolidate all these, but there are separate decisions that need to be made on their own merits, so sorry for kind of the redundancy of the presentation, but, uh, we're again talking about eighteen oh six J and three tenths road. Uh, we just initiated the annexation ordinance to, uh, exercise land use to be able to now zone the subject property. According to state statute, we have ninety days to zone the subject property. Pretty common practice in Fruta that the application run concurrently, the annexation and the zoning petition. It makes a lot of sense for public trans, uh, for, uh, public transparency to understand that the process is kind of moving through the system without, you know, constantly coming back for public hearings. Um, and so that's why they're combined, but nonetheless, uh, these, um, rezone applications do have separate legal notice requirements that aren't really geared with state statute necessarily, just the ordinance that we use as a home room municipality is the minimum ten day requirement. Uh, so all, all the legal notice has been accomplished within, uh, the required, uh, local laws, the fifteen day requirement prior to the planning commission meeting. And that was, that was done well in advance of that on February twenty-second for postcards, signposting and a newspaper. Here's, uh, the same graphic as before. We posted a, a legal notice sign on the property, so passerby's could see what was going on. Uh, in the city of Fruta with land development applications invited them to uh, not only the planning commission meeting, but also to tonight's meeting to hear about the rezone application. And then we're required to send out legal notice postcards, three hundred and fifty foot radius around the subject property and inviting the public to tonight's meeting. Uh, I don't need to go through that. The, um, the, uh, the subject property is, uh, recommended in the future land use map to be zoned community residential, which is the, uh, applicant's request tonight, and that is supported, uh, by staff and in the guiding documents and from the planning commission meeting. Five criteria to consider, uh, the majority is, is it consistent with the master plan? Yes. And, uh, is the zoning compatible with surrounding land uses, either existing or, uh, supported in the future land use map? And the answer to that is yes as well. Uh, is also incidental to the annexation, so it's running with that, and staff does support the community residential zone for this area. No reviewer expressed any concerns with the zoning request, and no written public comments have been received, nor were there any comments received at the planning commission meeting. And with that, Mr. Mayor, uh, that concludes my presentation, but staff does recommend the council adopt ordinance twenty twenty-three dash oh.
Okay. With this, we don't have an applicant because it's our correct? We don't have an applicant for this one because we're the one man or doing this request, correct?
This is petitioned by the property owner, so Kim Kirk is the applicant. She can.
That's why I just want to double check, just make sure I'm letting everybody speak that needs to speak. All right, Kim, one more opportunity.
Again, Kim Kirk, uh, Kirk Land Consulting in Grand Junction. Um, as Henry mentioned, you know, we've been through all the process and we're doing the, you know, doing them in the order as required. Um, I can't think of anything to add to his report, but I do, I am here if you have any additional questions. Thank you.
Yeah. With that, we're going to open up to public comment. If there's anybody in the audience that'd like to speak on this item, uh, now is your opportunity. All right, I'm hearing none. Is there anybody online?
No comments online, Mr. Mayor.
All right, with that, we're going to close public comment and bring you back to council. Is there any questions or comments from council? All right, do we have a motion?
I move to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero three, amending the official zoning map of the city of Fruta by zoning approximately three point four acres of property located at eighteen oh six J and three tenths road to a community residential zone.
Second.
All right, we've got a first and a second. Is there any questions or comments? All right, hearing none. Uh, Deb, would you please poll council?
Counsel Perser?
Yes.
Counsel Williams?
Yes.
Counsel Miller?
Yes.
Counsel Hancy?
Yes.
Counsel Bremen?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
All right, with that, uh, we're going to move into our city manager's report.
Mayor, members of council, uh, believe it or not, I don't have any updates tonight, so we can move on to the next item.
What?
Need to clean that face mark. A haircut and shake.
He was too focused on other things.
All right, I guess we'll move into our council reports and actions. Um, so we've got, I, I know we've got four items. We normally do a council report, so I don't know where we want to do that, like our community reports, if we want to do that first, or if we want to go through A and B and then go into that before executive session.
That's with A and hence here.
Yeah.
Yeah. That first, let's do it.
So we'll do A and B first, then we'll do our community reports, and then we'll go into our executive session. Okay. All right, with that, our first item on our, uh, council reports is a youth water board. It's a recommendation to the district court on appointment of Fruta representative to the Utah Water Board. Um, and so, Mike, are you going to present on this one?
Yes, I can give you a quick, so, um, per our nineteen eighty-three agreement with UTEWATER, uh, the city of Fruta has the right to nominate a board member uh, to the board of directors for the UTEWATER Conservancy District for a four-year term. Uh, our current, our current board member that the council nominated about four years ago uh is former mayor, uh, Ken Henry, who's here tonight, uh, and has served on that, uh, more than one term, I believe. Uh, two, five terms. Definitely more than one, and, uh, I knew of two since I've been here in, in the eight years. Um, and as, as you recall, uh, we are, uh, we are doing some updates to the, the UTEWATER agreement that we're working through, and so this may not be something that's in there in the future, because there's a, um, there's a, a judge appointment for this, uh, per their charter, but we, uh, we, UTEWATER accepted applications during a period of time that was posted and noticed to the public, and we received one application, and that was from Ken Henry to serve another four-year term, and so it's up to council. Um, uh, and the recommendation is to, uh, for the council to approve the nomination of Ken Henry for appointment to the UTEWATER Conservancy District Board. Um, but you have the opportunity to discuss and ask any questions you'd like. I know, uh, I know, uh, Mr. Henry's ready to answer questions if you have any, and, uh, but that's the item.
All right, thanks, Mike. So, uh, question is, because we don't appoint to this board, the district court does. We just give a recommendation, so. Um, I don't know if, Ken, did you want to say just a few things? I, I want to keep us on tasks, so, just, uh, uh, give us, I know you put in your letter of recommendation, but why you feel like you're the best candidate for this? You, you have to come up to the microphone because we've got people online, so you should be used to this by now.
I'm Ken Henry. Um, and I will say this to you, that, uh, with respect to the Berg's annexation and, uh, rezone, that, uh, your planning staff has done an excellent job. They've been open to multiple questions and, uh, uh, so just for what it's worth, you've got a good planning staff and Henry leads it up and his assistant, and so I just want to make mention of that, so. And then, uh, just a couple of comments about the UTEWATER board. Um, first, having sat where you guys are sitting right now as a city council person, and then later on as mayor, I want to thank you for your service. And sometimes you get, uh, there's positive feedback, and sometimes there's less than pos- positive feedback, and so thank you for your service. Um, your continued dedication and leadership is needed for the continual progress for the best little city in the state of Colorado. Um, second, I want to thank you for your consideration in recommending my reappointment to the UTEWATER board uh as a representative for subdivision three. Um, I was first appointed in two thousand nine to complete the remaining term for Wally Downer. I don't know if any of you knew him, but he was old time farmer in this area here. Probably Amy remembers the Downers. Uh, members, uh, are appointed for four-year terms and are appointed by the Mesa County District Court. That means we don't have to run for reelection, which I know you all enjoy. Um, if appointed, this will be my fifth term, and currently I am the second oldest board member in terms of age and in time on the board. I don't know if that means anything, but I thought I'd just go ahead and mention it to you. You know, there's a rich history pertaining to the domestic water of Fruta from the time when the Colorado River was diverted into ditches into the city of Fruta, which, uh, homes were used to store ditch water in cisterns for their domestic water. Um, that's changed substantially now with UTEWATER, which, uh, is rated as some of the highest and, and, uh, cleanest water in the entire country of the United States. So, UTEWATER delivered to your tap has never been used before, which if you'll think about that, very few other water delivery organizations can say that. It's been used and reused, but you know, your Fruta water from UTEWATER is as clean as it can be. Uh, I know you have a very full agenda tonight, but at some, at some time, I would like to share with you uh, history of the Fruta water, which I think you would find most interesting. Going back to, um, when the water line was first put through the, uh, national monuments and some of the problems, uh, developed back, uh, as a result of that, and why that, uh, the Antiquities Act helped, uh, Fruta consider going with UTEWATER, so if you'd ever be interested in that, I'd be happy to come back and share with you, either in a workstation or in, in a maybe a city council meeting when you have, uh, fewer items on your agenda. So finally, thank you for your consideration and recommending my reappointment to the, uh, UTEWATER Board of Directors.
Thank you.
I have, if you have any questions I can answer quickly, I'd be happy to. If not, well.
Anybody have any questions for Ken while he's up?
It's like, here's the man for the job.
I'm in, uh, reading the application. I learned more about the history than I ever knew, so thank you for the thorough application.
Thank you. Well, thanks for your undivided attention.
All right, thank you, Ken. All right, with, is there any, no more questions or comments than, uh, do we have a motion? Uh,
I move to approve the nomination of Ken Henry for a
I move to approve the nomination of Ken Henry for appointment to the Ute Water Conservancy District Board.
Second.
All right, we got a first and a second. Any other questions or comments? All right, hearing none. W, do you please poll council?
Counselor Williams?
Absolutely.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Counselor Hansi?
Yes.
Counselor Reiman?
Yes.
Counselor Perser?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Wish all decisions were that easy.
Thank you, Ken.
Thanks, Ken.
All right, with that, we're going to move into our next item, which is, uh, Resolution twenty twenty-three dash ten, uh, Resolution of the City of Frida in Opposition to Statewide Land Use and Zoning Preemptions and Senate Bill twenty-three dash two one three. Mike, are you?
Right, thank you. Yes, um, Mayor, members of council, that you've already had discussions previously in previous meetings about this. And I know at the last meeting during council reports and actions, had a discussion and decided to sign on to the CML, uh, opposition, uh, online forum that they had. They've also asked, and many communities are doing a resolution or a statement such as the one in your packet. And so we placed that on knowing you'd already discussed it and felt comfortable, uh, voicing that opposition to strengthen that by adding a resolution from this, uh, Frida City Council in opposition to Senate Bill, uh, twenty twenty-three, ten or two one three, sorry, twenty twenty-three, two one three. And, uh, mainly for the purposes of, uh, taking, because it takes away local control from the planning and zoning, similar to what you just did, which takes away the voice of, of local residents for local decisions and, and the professionals that are hired by the, uh, local jurisdiction to make those decisions. So the recommendation is to approve the resolution, and we will add that to, if, if approved, to the list with CML to make sure they have it, and it goes to the legislators who are considering, uh, this bill in the session.
All right, thanks, Mike. Are there any questions or comments on this item?
Have we heard any, have there been any updates since we last discussed, like with various amendments that have?
No, no major updates currently that we know of. There's been a lot of discussions and, I know there's been some updates since the beginning, but not since we discussed last time that I'm aware of.
Are there any communities, uh, that are, that approve this?
I'm, I'm not a.
What, what are we getting from CML or, or is it just everybody outside of Denver? Or do we have any support even from the Denver metro to, to a met?
It's, I, I, I can't specifically say that I know it's unanimous, but it's got to be very close to that across the whole state. Yeah. Um, there's a lot of concern with, uh, a state agency making planning and land use decisions within each various community without any input from the community or from the city council. So it's, um, when it comes to local control, most communities are against it. The only update I've heard is the possibility of, I just can't recall if it was, I don't think it was before our last meeting, but, um, the possibility of exempting, uh, some of the ski resort towns, actually, but.
Where's ski resort town, man?
Skis on those bikes.
I, I've been on email chains from different, uh, real estate organization groups and they're all. I've not seen anything anywhere that was in favor.
I, I did send an email to each of you individually today that you, um, you can sign up from CML if you'd like, and if you need assistance with that, let, let Deb know and we can help, um, with, with the signup. But it's a virtual town hall by CML about, about this bill, so that's available to, might be an opportunity to learn more as.
I'm signed up for that, but if you could pass my question off to them to see like if they can give summary of who's might be a shorter, hopefully it's a shorter list of who's, who.
Yeah, well, we'll take a look because I, I think they, they typically with something like this, they keep track or set up a, a site where we can see it that's updated. And so we'll, we'll check on that and then send that out. So you have it.
Thank you, Mike.
All right, any other questions or comments? Do we have a motion?
I emphatically move that we adopt Resolution twenty twenty-three dash ten, a resolution of the city of Frida in opposition to statewide land use and zoning preemptions in Senate Bill twenty-three dash two one three.
Second.
All right, we've got a first and a second.
You can third.
Questions or comments?
Third it.
Third that one.
All right, hearing none. W, do you please poll council?
Counselor Miller? Counselor Hansi?
Yes.
Counselor Reiman? Counselor Perser?
Yes.
Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
All right, before we go into executive session, then we're going to do our, our community council reports. So Janine, did you want to start off?
Yeah, um, I had two things from brought up to me. One, is it true that people over the age of sixty-two get a discount on their utility bill? In the city of Frida?
I can tell you that there, there are age requirements, but then there are also income requirements. They, there are two different thresholds where one is like for a single person. I think you have to make something like sixteen thousand eight hundred dollars a year. And for married, it's a, a little bit less than double that, but.
And then also.
Poverty level.
Age.
But yes, then also past the age of sixty-two or older.
Okay, fantastic. So, um, the real question is, can we communicate that somewhere? Because.
It is on our website.
But like in a broader, a citizen brought this to me, like he's eighty-something and had just found out about it and has lived here for a really long time. And so he even suggested maybe on the bill, do you know, do you, do you, if, you know, I don't know, but I don't know, but I'm just, I'm just.
Think we could do it in the city link that's sent to each, each household.
Great. It also may be a question answer some, sometimes.
Yeah, Q and A as well.
Because it, especially to, uh, the people over six, I mean, uh, for everybody, but I just think that is great.
Right.
Great information. I certainly didn't know about it either. Um, so I just.
We, we let newcomers, um, know at closing, our title companies do a great job of letting them know of that. Um, and, you know, telling them to apply and yeah, that, which is, that's where I learned it. I didn't know.
That's fantastic.
I was at a closing and learned it.
Can we, when we do that update, can we do a link that can take them right to that? So they can go to the process.
Great. And then, um, another thing was brought to my attention, um, from a dog lover and dog owner who nevertheless is requesting possibly certain places to be dog-free zones, and his suggestion was at the Salt Wash Park. Just the main concern is that if you have, you know, how everybody, um, even when leashes are supposed to be required, often people don't keep their dogs on leashes and then they always, oh, my, the dog's running up to you fiercely, but is very, you know, so the person's always like, don't worry, he's fine. But the request was just, um, to have spaces where, um,
Dogs aren't allowed.
Know for sure. I mean, of course, somebody has to, you can't really ever know for sure, but where it would be assumed that dogs wouldn't, um, be so you could have a free space, maybe where kids could be not worried about that or anybody. Anyways, I just said, I, I, he asked me to bring that up, so I am bringing it up.
I talked to Jeremy too.
Okay.
I did too.
I talked to Mike and I know Mike was, and I talked about, because I think some of it may be signage too.
Right.
Um, because his recommendation was Little Salt Wash Park, but I think we'd have a hard time saying, hey, you can't bring your dog to that. But I think it might be back to that issue of signage, because I know Mike talked to Mark and they are required to be on leash there. So I don't know what else, Mike, you want to?
Yeah, I think I, it came up from Little Salt Wash Park and, and people's dogs not being on leashes, which it is required, um, to be on a leash there. Of course, there's not somebody there twenty-four seven enforcing, but, um, but it can be enforced when, when that's, when that's occurring. But we were going to reevaluate where the signage is there, so it's noticeable, um, as well. And then, uh, work with our animal control officer on just ideas and thoughts and related to it. It's, it's been a, a, a separate challenge with that at Little Salt Wash Park is people using the baseball fields, um, to, you know, play fetch and things with their dogs, but there's a lot that goes into keeping the baseball fields ready for each game. Um, and so, uh, unfortunately, we're starting to kind of get to that point where Little League and, and Parks staff are, you know, we need to lock these, uh, facilities when they're not being used and, and things like that. So it kind of starts broadening to a few other, uh, aspects. I, I put a note, and if you are open to it, we can definitely do some research on, on the, you know, how other places have dealt with like dog free zones. I know, I know that hasn't been something that we've explored in the past necessarily, or that came up during the Parks Health Recreation Open Space and Trails Master Plan or anything like that, but we can look into it. The, the, the challenge would be enforcement, you know, in some of those, uh, in some of those aspects. But we definitely, uh, could do some things to help with the education of where dogs need to be on a leash. We have, of course, the only park that doesn't require a leash is Snooks Bottom and then the Dog Park as, as well.
All right, any other questions or comments for, on this one? Or anything else we wouldn't need Mike to research?
I think it'd be nice to hear some options on how we can manage it.
Yeah.
Because I, I definitely get the concerns with it. I know there's, I'm one of those families that we don't have dogs. Um, and it does get our children, it has in the past when our kids were younger, so I, I appreciate the guy's comment and it's nice to hear it from a dog lover.
Yes.
Um, and not from a.
Owner and lover.
And not just from somebody who could be a potential dog hater, but it's coming from the heart. But it'd be nice to see what the options are for how we can manage it if it's being pro, you know, tends to be with some ordinances, we're reactive and not proactive. Is there any proactive solutions out to that we can have if it's the vehicle out there at the beginning of the season or, or something that would hopefully help the situation?
And then I had, had our, or we had our Arts and Culture Board meeting, um, last week. And it went really well, and it was the first meeting that we had since, uh, Cocovino, so a lot of that, um, was just recap about things that went well and great and things that maybe might need to change a little bit. And then they're up and running and getting ready to put down, put the guidelines together to put out the art requests for the.
Pedestals.
Rotating sculptures. So that's where things are at. Good stuff.
All right, well, thank you. Aaron?
I just have some questions, you know. There's some, I'll call it a frustration, but it wasn't necessarily big, but, um, you know, this last weekend is just an example. It's just brought to something as an example that, like, we had the Desert Rats Trail Running Festival in here. And, um, I know during the, their setup, they blocked off the access to this building and it was frustrating. And I know Shannon helped, um, fix that together, but it just, as I was looking at different things, I saw, these are the concerns that I, I, I see from it is. And I don't know how it resolved, if they were able to, if they actually blocked, stopped blocking the main access to the building. But then we blocked off, um, parking with the big tent. And that's where the handicap parking is. And then it's like, shoot, they, they took over highly utilized parking spots, um, for DMV days on Tuesday and Thursday. And so we've got a big population that comes in and utilizes that service within our building, and they don't have a, a, a quality place to park. Um, and then I noticed that we've got temporary parking for, um, ADA parking on the north side. But my observations with that is it was full of employee parking, parked cars and city, city vehicles in ADA restricted parking spots. And not allowed for the north side of the building or. Yeah, so it was concerned there to see what we can do to make sure that we have adequate parking because, you know, I guess the, I don't fully understand the implications, but what's the risks? What's the fines? What's the downfalls if we, as a community, get, um, hit with failing to comply with ADA laws? Um, I believe that's probably federal guidance. Um, but, uh, it would be nice to have a plan that we better execute.
So, so we do have a plan and, and for some reason, this one with this, uh, event, unlike all the other events where the handicap parking is taken, where we create the temporary that's, that's utilized, was missed, and I'm not quite sure why, but we caught it, uh, when it was too late. We also have the construction going on. And then on the north side, we did have blocked off for construction, um, and this event, uh, the, there was, there were some moving pieces with it. I know through the, through the process. So allowing them to put the tent there for a lot of other reasons of what variables that were going on. But our, it's not something that's going to continue to happen. Um, when you saw Shannon and asked him to check on what the, the block to the entry, um, Matt Carson was already on it earlier and talked, had already talked to the event organizers. They moved it. It wasn't blocked the rest of the time. So, I mean, these things were noticed. I, I appreciate you noticing them, but just want you to know it wasn't that we were ignoring them or.
No, no, no.
Already on it and, um, the handicap, uh, similar to like Mike, let's check in and some of those, we just, we just seem to be, we just seem to make sure that that's not missed when something gets added like that. So, um, but that was a, the, you're right. I mean, we don't want to block. We can, I mean, when the, when the buildings close, it's a far different situation related to those, to those. But, um, when you have setup during the week and you got, and you have those functions, you have to, you, you, we do have to create an alternative and, uh, did not do a good job of that for this event. So from the.
It might be, it might be good because I know Kathy does a lot of the setup for that stuff. If she's aware of it, then she might be able to steer when they're in the heat of battle. When it's happening, Kathy might, if she's more knowledgeable about some of the requirements, she might be able to. Kathy from Cardinal Events, she's the one that brings in all our.
Well, our, a lot of people use them. Our staff know the requirements and.
I'm just saying, because she's there, her staff sometimes there in the morning with just those people and they're to ask and put this there and put it there. But if she knew, it probably wouldn't hurt.
Yeah, yeah. The one with the blocking the entry way was just a, you know.
And I knew that was a temporary, my, I guess my big concern was seeing parking, the, the temporary designated ADA parking on the north side full of staff vehicles and city vehicles, that's just not appropriate and doesn't look good for our community, like.
Yeah.
Is that whole thing had signs all across.
Well, some of that is we put it up so that during the event it's there, and so they put it up, all the city vehicles are still there, and then they start moving them. It wasn't necessarily, there was a miscommunication from the standpoint of accessing the building during setup, but setting up for the event when nobody's here and trying to.
And I know it was, it was, it's, it's a busy time downs or outside just because we have so much going on in this building.
Right, right.
It's looking good, by the way. It's nice to see that you can't even see the door.
Right, you can't even tell.
South side, right? That's actually gone, but no, I just, I've heard, I heard comments from community, um, voicing their frustrations on accessibility into the building. And, and I just know that the community utilizes and loves those DMV days.
Oh, yeah.
Um, and often there, the people, often a, a lot of the, um, visitors are, you coming to for the DMV are, um, using those ADA parking spots, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That's all I had. Matthew?
All right, um, a couple of things. Uh, the Western Colorado Economic Center is the twenty-seven. Hopefully we'll see you there. Uh, Mike, I will email you, uh, questions for help and backup on some of that stuff as a panelist.
Definitely.
We had a little event Saturday. Can't remember what it was. Somebody has a larger version of these. What it was. Congratulations.
Let explain what you're talking about for the members of our audience.
What, what exactly did you win?
We won, uh, Member Business of the Year for the Chamber of Commerce. That was nice.
Congratulations. It was fun to see your reaction.
That's us.
It was kind of fun to see.
Yeah.
But at the Chamber event, a lot of that went to the foundation and through the fundraising efforts. Uh, there will now be three scholarships, uh, to support local Frida residents to go to university. Forgot mine.
You want me to hold it over here?
I've got it. Also, uh, Friday, April twenty-eighth, uh, I'll be fortunate enough to be a judge at CMU for, uh, an event there for their marketing and, uh, presentations. So that will be fun. And GJAP is bright and early tomorrow morning. Looking forward to it.
Thank you for your service.
All right, Amy. All right, Amy.
Um, my only thing was, uh, speaking of parking and signage, so apparently people are interpreting our Aspen Street signage to mean that large vehicles park on the north side and not large vehicles park on the south side.
Oh.
Um, which I I've witnessed, I I thought it was kind of funky that there was like a trend going and then a couple of the business owners did say like, yeah, we've, like, they're actually specifically saying like, oh, the sign says we're supposed to park over here. So instead of like directing them to Civic Center, they're interpreting.
They're interpreting it as on Aspen Street. Uh, that's a good point. Thank you.
It's definitely, I mean, this weekend, um, there was some very extended.
Gotcha.
Like you really couldn't have two lanes of traffic, had to kind of wait for the other person to go and then you had to go into it. So I don't know what we need to do if there's your signage.
Sign that's right here that's on the corner. All it really, because it has the arrow and then it says large vehicles.
Yeah.
And that's the one where people are like, oh, so you're supposed to park one. They said, I think really if it just said oversized lot.
Yeah.
On the side, the wordage on the sign, I think is a little weird.
And that's a good point. We'll take, we'll take a look at it. We have, I mean, since we put that up, we had an uptick of large vehicles in the Civic Center parking lot.
Yeah, which is great. So some people
Good to know if like.
And it made me think that they were like, no, literally the sign says like.
A lot of them too, if you, the way that it goes, it's not even that they're doing it in front of the businesses. I think they think that it's along.
Right.
Yeah, it's fine. That's still, they're out in the way, but it's, it's a little better.
Yeah.
Think on that.
Yeah.
Said oversized.
Clear.
And poignant.
Gotcha.
Then people would look over that way and go, oh, there's a lot over there. Cause people coming from out, I don't think they think they realize.
Oh, yeah. Thanks for sharing that. That's.
There's a nice little thread on Facebook. They wanted to start a shuttle service.
They wanted us to start a shuttle service.
Somebody's like, oh, you want more taxes?
That's all I have.
All right. James. Um, almost every conversation.
There was, there was a slightly huge event yesterday that we all attended. The opening of the Fruit of Bark Park and it was very successful. And uh
Yeah, that was so cool.
Yeah, and the staff did phenomenal job. They did everything about it was was great from TR's work on just getting the word out and doing the spread and the city staff's work that they did on the ground clearing and the everything was great and a lot of really happy people.
So many cute pups. Happy dad. So many cute pups.
Especially those twins. Oh, God.
With in great chains that were like, oh.
We couldn't have been, I myself couldn't have been happier and more proud of the staff and everything that they did. So I really appreciate it. Tourism's on Thursday, so we'll get ready for work, right? We're getting ready for our presentation the week after that. So that's it.
All right. Um, I've just got a couple of things. Uh, Matthew and I get the opportunity to present in a few weeks to a Boy Scout troop. And so they're going to get their merit badge for uh learning about uh city government and that. And so.
Nah, you'll be, you'll be a ship. And the community merit badge is what I would assume they're doing unless it's associated with um the trail to first class with scout, tenderfoot, second class or first class rank advancements.
Oh, I think it's just going to be this. Yeah, so.
Yeah, so it's, there's some minor stuff in the rank advancements, but the biggest, big ones I would assume they're going for is the commu- citizenship and the community merit badge. Just Google it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So Matthew and I get to do that. Um, the other one is, um, I'm going to bring up another concern. Uh, Bernie Robinson uh called me today about a speeding problem on um East Paper Avenue. And so I know he's here tonight. You didn't want to get up on a public comment time because that's what I wanted you to. Because now, now there is no public comment for you to talk. So this is just with a, there's just for us up here to discuss. So um oh, I said, I I asked if you wanted to talk a public comment, but you didn't want to get up and talk at public comment. Now the, it's limited to just our council discussing this. So I want to, I thank you for coming in, but we're going to just discuss this a little bit right now. No, we're going to talk about it right now. Okay, so. Okay, okay, all right. So no, I appreciate you coming in Bernie. And so we're going, we're going to talk a little bit about this right now. All right. Um, so he brought up um uh some people are going fifty to sixty miles an hour down East Paper and.
Like between here and eighteen?
Yeah, so it's right before the um.
It's between Pine and coming this direction.
Right. So it's heading west.
West.
Dead end right there where it gets to the end. And so.
Well, we've been working with with uh with Bernie since the fall. And so the police have been doing extra time on on paper and we have quite a few stats on the number of people they pulled over and and giving either warnings to or or tickets to. Um, we had the cables on the road for quite a long period of time, which are when you run over the two cables, it tells the speeds. Um, we were not averaging those types of, we were averaging the, it's, it's a twenty five mile per hour. So a lot of people think it's thirty five. And so we were getting a lot around that thirty five. Um, technically, if we follow traffic standards, it would, it would tell us to raise it to thirty five. Our police department, we have not wanted to do that because we don't want to see that um we don't want to see it only increased on that aspect. So we've been doing more patrols since uh about, I think it was October last year and um yeah. I can, I can provide the.
Or do we have any ideas or any?
I think more for traffic calming. Is there anything that?
Speed bump.
Is it repeat offenders? Like, are we seeing the same people getting ticketed for it or it's just?
No.
Or is it like during like when high school gets out or is there like?
Part of it is that road is really.
No.
It is really wide, so it is more comfortable.
It's a, it's a wide road. And so um I know we've talked, we've uh Bernie and I have talked about it about um the uh when you get to certain parts of paper where there's more cars parked on the road, kind of like the downtown effect, the why we, why we do on street parking. It definitely slows down. It's that first part when people turn off Pine. And it could be the other way, but I know when they turn off Pine and they're heading west is both ways. Yeah, um. Where it widens and there's not as many cars, just don't happen to be parked there. People tend to drive faster, so.
Is there signage, the speed limit sign right at, close by that point?
There is.
Ah, geez.
And it's scary because there's a lot of delightful little children in that neighborhood.
Do we have an idea of how to move forward on solving it?
It's the, speed bumps are not an answer for a roadway like that. Um, working with like the, the fire department and and others. Um, speed bumps tend, tend to be kind of the first thing people think of, but there's, there's too many statistics and reasonings of not doing speed bumps on on certain roads, especially a travel corridor like that. Uh, the signage, we've, we've, we've relooked a signage. There's been, to make sure that it's visible. Um, it's, it's really just trying to have a consistent presence of of uh enforcement. Um, the challenge is um people adjust how they drive. I mean, they drive when they don't see the police officer and they drive a little faster. When they do, they drive slower and um, which is why we do the cable testing at times because that tells us that typically gives you a a little bit better picture of what's occurring over a period of time because there, it's not the police car sitting out there with the um with the radar. Um, I've gone on a ride along and sat out there with them. Um, Bernie was nice enough to offer the police to sit on the porch and do it from there. I know they've stopped by to talk and kind of tell what uh, this was at least last in the fall. I've talked to the chief quite a bit about it. I mean, it's, it's, there's a few areas like that in the city and they just try and do more rotations. You probably noticed the police out stopping cars a little more than what you've seen in the, in the past and and uh uh and uh so they're, they're just enforcing it a lot more than what we've tend to do. They tend to give, they definitely give tickets when it's repeat. Um, if they, and they mark down if it's a, if it's a warning. Uh, but it, I know from the feedback I I received and um there was, you know, definitely like the morning and uh after school and in the evening after work or seemed to be the, the busiest. And then ironically on the weekend as well. I mean, not just, not just those morning and so we're trying to hit it at those times. Um, of course they can't be there twenty four seven and they're moving around and calls come in and they're going somewhere else. But we have a few um officers that are, that are taking it upon themselves to try and focus on that area among a few others that are similar in nature.
My other question I have is, like, I know the, the canal that runs right there, and I don't know how far down that canal is from where that speeder would be something that we could look at traffic control, like the bulb outs, because I know we do that for downtown. Because those won't affect on street parking, but it would be a way to maybe.
Similar to on Ottley, we have a, the, you know, but it definitely slows you down because it narrows and um, that's, that's definitely something we've had, we've, we've looked at, we haven't identified a a spot. I mean, the one, places where we have them are where like trails are crossing. I mean, we love to get the canal company to let us put trails along there and put them at those locations, but.
I mean, if it's a safety thing, if we talk about public safety, it may be even though we don't have a trail, it might be something we could look at to see if that's one of the areas that might.
Yeah, I'll, I'll definitely have our traffic committee kind of look through that area for any other types of alterations uh to the roadway, but.
We don't have, we don't have access to one of those, those little signs that when you're coming up on an area and it's like, say it's thirty five is the speed limit. And if you go over it, it blinks and it's all slowed down.
And we've, we moved that around.
That there for a while?
Yeah, we've had it there a few.
People kind of in the habit and it didn't work, huh?
It's two to three weeks and that's it.
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's always, and I hate to, I hate to say it this way, but it's always going to be a challenge because technically the, the stats would show it should be thirty five. And so because that's what, and that's what people naturally.
So we want to be careful. We don't.
And so we're, we're up against a tougher scenario with that because I mean, it's very similar to the other roadways and design and everything that are thirty five throughout the. But then it has similar nature to in some of the subdivisions that have, that are twenty five. Um, might not be as, or it might be wider, but it's still a residential area, which is why we've kept it at that twenty five level. Um, because Ottley's even a little different, you know, when you look at that. Yeah, I mean, it's definitely a, a target area for the police department to kind of stay there. We have, we move the trailer around to different locations. We get requests regularly from residents and then we kind of have a lineup and and then, but we base it not just on the requests, on kind of the needs that we have and but it doesn't hurt to rotate it through there regularly as much as.
Sad to hear it does another stronger effect.
Yeah. Right. And that's.
Change the interstate to seventy.
Yeah.
Twenty four on like, that's still kind of a tough area. Like I, I get mad because I slow down there and I hate slowing down. Nobody else.
But I.
I don't think there are any.
Long, long paper.
Stretch without a cross.
No. There's not, and that, that could be an opportunity.
Middle school.
There is one on the, there's an intersection on the which uh south side.
But I mean, like. Yeah.
No, there are no four ways. Right.
Right.
Well, yeah, I don't know if, I mean, because it's probably not slated to put a stop sign, even at one of the, just only a three way.
So the only answer is really just more patrol.
Yeah, I, I, well, unless there's some opportunities for kind of the, it's, it's just hard for me to think of where the bulb outs would, would actually be able to go there, but.
South side streets, you know.
There's
One side.
There's a lot of engineering and things that require where they go. It's not just throw them around because that.
Is that something, is that something you can revisit though, Mike? I mean, can we?
Yeah, I guess what I'm, what I'm trying to say is there's not a great answer, but it's not being ignored. It's, it's constantly being worked on with, by the police and um, it's just, it's, it's a, it's a challenging piece. Yeah. So it's not, we're not, there's just not a solve all answer, but, but it isn't being ignored.
The kind of next steps moving forward, we'll continue the police rotation. The traffic committee is looking at possible solutions. Do you, is there an ETA when they may come back with possible solutions or with their kind of guidance?
Well, this will be asking them to relook because there were no solutions to come up with in the design of where that road is and kind of what is, except for everything shows. So so we, we have a modified version of the MUTCD standards because if we went strictly by MUTCD standards, which are for the roadways across the country, we wouldn't have most of our crosswalks and we wouldn't have most of our stop signs. It would not require them anywhere else in the country, right? So we've modified it to have some version of, of, of having those. But even with that, it shows, it should be thirty five. It shows, you know, all these other, other pieces. So um, and there's not, crosswalks are for specific connections, but not just random, random pieces where, you know, you're trying to. And it has to be certain distances from stop sign, from the stop sign. Um, the, the part, the part that's that's the biggest issue is right from Pine to um a few blocks down. So.
Isn't it get an officer to move into a house right there? Park on the road.
Maybe we do just park uh where there isn't uh on-street parking, might, actually might not be a bad idea. We shouldn't put that in the minute.
There's a little town in Utah that does that. They have like a, a retired car with a dummy in it. It's very effective.
But I, I mean, I, I like what you said, Mike, as far as if we were like any other town, we wouldn't have this. But I guess I don't want to stop looking at creative solutions or can we fix this? Because if we know it's a two-block area, is it something where maybe it's just paint striping on the, the road to slow them down? Yeah, but there, you know, I, I, I guess I don't want to say if we know that that's an issue there, how do we creatively solve it? That may not be tens of thousands or hundreds of thousands of dollars, but is there another solution that could mentally slow people down because they're, they see that, oh, wait, there's, I've got to pay attention. Yeah.
Yeah.
James brought up the interstate to seventy. Those actual signs are digital, like I believe, like the seventy is our lights.
Yeah.
That might be enough of a different alert to kind of, I don't know how expensive those are, but that might be something to think about. Because I, like, I think I noticed them right a little bit more than just a regular um.
It is, they did a really good job of changing that to from seventy five to seventy and getting
Right.
The word out and because of that, I think a lot.
That might be.
Know it's seventy there and it's stupid that it's seventy there.
You know, it is.
I think, I, I think there's got to be some way that works with the systems of catching the attention that it's twenty five, because I think that's the biggest thing that's missed. Um, uh I mean, I'll admit, I, I feel, I had, I had talked to Bernie one day on the phone and then I turned the corner and it still caught me off guard, right? Like I, I was dealing with the issue and if, because you, you, you make that turn and you just, it does feel like you would, if, if you were to guess, you'd probably say it's thirty five. And so what, and you can see the sign, but not everybody's looking, you, you don't, you know. So anything, I, I think what we'll, I'll try and challenge him is thinking of what are the creative ways to see that it's thirty five and get that, you know? Twenty five, sorry.
I mean, I even see what they do in some of the roundabouts over, I mean, I'm off of Horizon Drive where they put like I seventy west on the pavement and I seventy east on the actual on the pavement.
Paint the twenty fives on the.
And I, I mean, I saw that when I was out in California. It's like a lot of the streets, when they changed it, you saw these huge five or six foot numbers painted on there and that was the speed limit.
And you can put reduced speed zone on signs and stuff.
Right. But I'm saying on the actual on the pavement because you're looking ahead and you see that and I don't, I mean, again, I can't believe that would be inexpensive. And it might be a creative way to try and get people to see it without putting up another sign. It's then on the pavement. So I don't know. I just wanted, I know Bernie contacted me today and so I told him I'd bring it up to council tonight to see if there's something. And he did let me know that he had been talking to Mike and, and on this topic. So. All right. Thank you, Bernie, for coming in.
Well, I just want to say a few things if you've got time.
Um, we, Bernie, we've got other things. Um, we, Bernie, we've got other things on our ag- agenda tonight, so um.
Well, I just wanted to say, um, well, I built my house there fifty-five years ago and there was two or three cars coming down the street. Now it's a racetrack. And all the new homes they built out north of town, they come down Eighteen Road to Paper, taking their kids to school and they didn't get out of bed in time and that's where they make up their time.
So we're going to keep looking at it, Bernie, just, we're going to keep looking at some solutions for that, so.
Yeah, I understand that. I didn't hear everything Mike said, but I did hear some of it, but that's my goal to get a permanent solution, not, I mean, I appreciate what they've done. I don't know, I've probably written fifty or sixty tickets. And I think Mike come up with a forty-five mile an hour average. If I'm right on that.
All right, all right, well, Bernie, we're gonna, we've got some other items on our agenda that we've got to get to tonight still, so. I, we'll be back in touch with you and we'll see what we can, when do.
I might say I got my, Matt with me, he's my neighbor.
Okay.
And he has a bunch of little kids, bunch little kids on the other side and they, their basketball rolls out in the street quite often, and there's no point in waiting until one of them gets run over to fix the problem.
Right, so we're, we're hearing you, Bernie, so just so you know. All right, thank you. All right, thank you.
Thanks for being here. Thank you for coming.
All right, with that, um, we're going to go into our next item. Uh, it's our executive session to convene an executive session for determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations and instructing negotiators pursuant to CRS section twenty-four, six, four, oh, two, four E with regard to the amended and restated contract with Ute Water Conservancy District and receiving legal advice from the city attorney pursuant to CRS section twenty-four, six, four, oh, two, four B regarding the same. Um, so with that, I'm going to ask a procedural question. Are we going to do both executive sessions, then come out of that? Are we going to go in and come out and go back in?
Um, maybe Mary Elizabeth can answer that question, but uh, she might have hopped off to get on the new one, but. Oh, she on? Okay.
I, I'm here. Uh, so, you know, in this instance.
We don't plan to come into open session after the two.
Okay, that's what I wanted to double check, because I need to make an announcement if we're not.
That's right. There, there's no plan to come back into um open session.
Okay, all right, so with that on record, we're going to be going into two executive sessions and we will not be coming back for public meeting afterwards. So when he's done, we'll have to get a motion to go into executive session.
True.
Yeah, but Amy just left. She didn't wait till.
We have a majority, should we just?
No, she's here and on record, so I don't want to.
No, you also, yeah, I, I would wait for her to come back, please.
Well, I, I have to be doing it right if Mary Elizabeth agrees, right?
Yes, that's right, there.
I didn't pull an MB. Matthew Trace hasn't been right right now yet, no.
Have enough to make a motion.
Right. Did talk to Andrew Weber today. He said he's been texting you a little bit in the last few weeks. Yeah. Okay, who, did Aaron let Amy out? I mean, are you, you're responsible, you're on.
I am not my brother's keeper.
Yeah.
No.
You've seen, have you seen this? Oh, it's amazing. You got to watch it. It's on.
You know, you're on public record right now.
It's, well, public record, it's funny, you should watch it. But you reminded me of that, because the, the judge is always yelling at the guy running the jury, that he's the responsible. Yeah, yeah. No, for the guy, the chair person. This, it's, it's an amazing show.
Um, we didn't, we're waiting for you to make a motion to. All right, do we have a motion? Aaron's going to read us a motion.
I move for determining positions relative to the matters that may be subject to negotiations, development, developing strategy and negoti- for negotiations and instructing negotiators pursuant to CRS section twenty-four, six, four, oh, two, four E with regard to the amend and restated contract with Ute Water Conservatory District and receiving legal counsel, legal advice from the city attorney pursuant to CRS section twenty-four, six, four, oh, two, four B regarding the same. Do we need to read the other motion?
No, do we have a second? All right, we got a first and a second. Any other questions or comments? All right, hearing none, W, please poll council.
Counselor Hansi.
Yes.
Counselor Bremen. Counselor Perser. Counselor Williams.
Yes.
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
All right. We're going to, do we need a few minutes before we transition into the executive session? Because I know, you did, that's what I say.
Are you guys, are you guys staying in there? Okay.